I'm gonna have to get one of those inflatable ones. Welcome, everyone, Committee of the Whole, Tuesday, May twenty first, two thousand and twenty four. We would like to begin this meeting by acknowledging that we are gathered on traditional ancestral and unceded territories of Inca Capla and Silk People. Adoption of minutes, two point one, Committee of the Whole Minutes, January twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four. Recommendation that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on January twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four be adopted. Council Petrosy, Council Attorney, any errors or omissions? Oh, seal, seal.
Thank you, Yourship. I just wanted to say that it was pointed out that there were some errors and omissions in the copy that was circulated to council in the agenda package. However, we have been able to change those, make the corrections you have all received, copies of the revised ones, and those are the ones that you are considering at this point.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you for finding all those errors. Oh. Thank you for finding all those errors. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Two point two, Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, March fifth, two thousand and twenty four. Recommendation that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held on March fifth, two thousand and twenty four be adopted. Counselor Egan, Counselor Matt Ogan, any errors or omissions, corrections? Did Wendy touch this at all? Are we good? Okay, good deal. All those in favor? Opposed, carried. Three point one, Nicola Valley Community Theater Society Proposal, Mr. Kurt Christoffersen, Nicola Valley Theater Society will present. Kurt, you're up. Make your way to the mic. I'll get you push that red button. For that button, and I'll make it red. Yeah, push. There you go. There you're live.
Different being on this side of it. There you go. Yeah. Not that I miss it. I know you guys, how hard you work. So, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to present tonight. This one has been a long time in the works. Our goal is still what we started with many years ago, to create a dedicated arts, culture, and entertainment space as part of the Civic Center. The rationale is basically small communities struggle to compete with larger centers. But small communities do have advantages that they can draw upon. They can offer a more intimate lifestyle. They often have their own unique identity. And that's a strength, and Merritt is such a community. It has much potential. We're a rural community in a beautiful setting. We have a rich cultural heritage. But smaller communities need to work hard in order to keep their people and to attract new growth. We can't afford to lose our services. People must want to live here, shop here, and be able to maintain a meaningful quality of life. That includes health services and recreational activities. They're crucial. So is arts and culture. They're a fundamental part of the fabric that binds a community together and needs to be encouraged and supported. Arts and culture activities don't just happen. We need adequate facilities to do so. The Civic Center is already home to a great many activities that bring this community together. With careful planning, we believe it can become even more integral to this community's well-being. For well over a decade, the Nicola Valley Community Theater Society has worked diligently to provide a path to attain a venue for this community in which the creative arts can be better supported and promoted. Merritt has a strong tradition, excuse me, Merritt has a strong tradition of participating in and encouraging growth in arts and culture activities. And the Civic Center is at present the best facility the city has for public performances and community functions. However, it does have some rather severe limitations when used for the performing arts. We can do better. So the vision is basically to adapt the Civic Center in such a way that it can be more flexible in how it can serve the community. Merritt needs a venue capable of comfortably housing civic events and cultural activities. And how to do that is what we're proposing. We would like to be able to attach a theater seating section onto the auditorium east wall. Now, if you've got the diagram that I sent out, that was done on my handy dandy Etch A Sketch. It's quite evident I'm not an architect. But it will give you an idea of what I'm talking about, I hope. If I ramble on and lose you, please interrupt and ask. So we'd attach the theater seating section onto the auditorium east wall. The seating section would extend into the present parking area. The capacity, we think, could be somewhere between two hundred and fifty to three hundred seats. And this would definitely expand the footprint of the building. It's not just about better seats, better loudspeakers, and so on. This is actually a physical addition to the building. The portion of the auditorium under the raised roof could become the stage area for the theater space. But in talking with staff over the years, I know that they do not want to lose the floor space in that auditorium. It's very well used as it is. Any of you that were there for the Christmas events and so on understand how valuable the auditorium space is. Room dividers, similar to the existing movable wall that separates the east and west auditorium portions, would be needed in order to separate this, what I'm calling the stage area, from the main auditorium when the theater would be in session. An additional movable wall section would be needed to close off the theater seating portion from the stage area when the existing auditorium as it is, is needed. Does that make sense to you? Okay. It also adds another dimension as to how the Civic Center can be used. It would actually give you three divided portions in the existing auditorium. And you all know how valuable that space is for small group work. But having the movable walls allows the full auditorium to be used. The advantage is it would add flexibility and versatility of uses to the existing structure. The existing auditorium space would have the option to be divided, as I said, into three spaces, not just two, as it is now. It would be an improved capability to host special events and conferences. It would reduce the need to cancel regular bookings every time you host larger special events. And that's a problem right now with the booking office. They have to cancel one event for regular users in order to allow the auditorium to be set up and so on. The existing operational demands would not be greatly impacted. Staff already does the janitorial, the office, the bookings, all of that. It's not like a completely new, separate building somewhere else in town that has to hire from scratch. The washrooms, the foyer, the meeting rooms, the kitchen facilities, the office space is already in place. And it would be a significant cost saving as compared to starting a brand-new building from scratch. Possible additional space is available for storage and/or office space underneath the theater seating. I've been in quite a few theaters, and that's exactly how they use the space underneath the seating sections and for storage. A dedicated cultural entertaining option is available for Merritt at a fraction of the cost of building, maintaining, and operating a separate building. There are some concerns that would have to be met. One is the loss of parking spaces. If we're going building out into the parking area, we did have that checked out, and possibly it could be offset by reconfiguring the present parking areas. Did Counselor have a question?
I do. Sorry, yeah, I do. When you're talking about the east and west, that's and then where it says east is that the outside of the building, and you're adding two more sections on in that drawing?
The stage auditorium and the scene areas with the difference?
Okay.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's the right one.
Yeah.
You mean auditorium, this proportion is where we're considering?
Okay. It looks like it comes out far into the, I'm just looking, looking, thinking about the alley there. Yeah, I see that, but I always thought that they were that was one long wall, like from your third, where it says the stage auditorium. I thought that came, that was a wall that came all the way down.
This, this is looking at.
Yeah, I know which way you recommended it.
This, this, this line, this is the blue line.
Okay.
It's not, it's not the side of the way.
Okay. So the only new part is the seated area. Seating area.
Beautiful, smoky line.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Good. Thank you for asking.
Not just that whole square, just that, that line is, is the okay, that is the whole thing. Okay, so that's, this is the total. Okay, I get it now.
Yeah, maybe if we'd have the diagram turned that way. Anyways. And the other thing is how to get access into the theater. It might have to have some reconfiguration of the present entrance into the lobby, but wouldn't be much of a change to the foyer, but you'd have to get into the theater somehow. You wouldn't want to go through the stage area. So basically, I hope that clears up some of the misconceptions. If council decides that they would like to explore this option further, and that's all that we're asking for at this point. It would be appreciated if we could have a liaison with council, council member that would serve as who to go to. It would also be very handy to have somebody that works in the maintenance department at the Civic Center. I often talk with Dave just to run ideas past, and you can usually tell by the look on his face whether he thinks this is a good idea or incredibly dumb. So if he had thought the last time I talked to him it was incredibly dumb, I probably wouldn't be up here. We'd also have to define the areas of responsibilities. Theater Society does have the funds to do the exploration. We don't want to ask the city for any money for that at all. Okay, so the exploration is at no cost to the city. But what the responsibilities are, it's not our building, it's your building. So who would be doing, hiring the architects and so on to design the building? Now, we've gone through this process when we were going to be having a separate building downtown with the movie theater and so on, and I think I sent information as well at one time or other that that's the vision that we had for many years, is that a movie theater would be providing an income to support such a building. COVID changed an awful lot. You know, the home entertainment systems really, really built up during that time, and the industry has changed. They're still making movies and so on, but the industry has changed to such a point that we had to make a difficult decision. That just wasn't the way to go. It wouldn't work for Merritt. Most small communities that have theaters already are keeping on going, but it's a struggle. And to start a new theater, a movie theater. No. So we'd have to decide who's in charge of hiring an architect for, for. We've done it in the past. We have drawings in that as for the previous plans. But we're starting from scratch again. Who hires? We pay. Design and engineering, if the city decides that this is what they want to explore, you'd want to have city input and society input. So for the council, the society has some expertise, but as I said, the city is the owner. The council has to decide whether it will accept going forward. Say no, we're not interested in doing any additions to the Civic Center, or if we go ahead and get the plans and the city says we don't like this about it, we don't like that about it, then that's the third option. Yes, the plan is finalized and accepted. Your council decides that's the route to go, then we'd have to make the plans available to the public in order to seek the required funding. And there are funds out there. We've talked to various people over the years and corporations and so on. If you have the plans, then people will look at them. Private donors, corporate sponsors, available grants, TNRD, local First Nations, and so on. We've talked to them all before. The society request is if we go down the road and do the explorations and you're, you accept it, then we would hope that in the future, when funds become available, that you'd go ahead with the project. And we would be interested in helping to raise more funds. A few things that aren't on your paper. One of the theaters that I have visited extensively is the Rebelstoke Theater. They built, it was a joint school district city project. Very, very well used for local concerts, professional entertainers, presentations, city events, film festivals, political functions, and so on. The only complaint that I've ever had about the Rebelstoke Theater is that maybe they built it too small. It's two hundred and eighty seats. If this plan goes forward, Merritt would have a true convention center. The addition of a lecture presentation theater to the Civic Center makes it more marketable to other interest groups. It's good for business, attracts visitors. Having a proper theater setting encourages different user groups. Many of these we've already had in Merritt, and they've as I said, COVID was a death signal for a lot of these groups, such as the Film Society, things like that. But if you have a proper theater setting, it encourages use of bringing in movies. They're still popular. Arts and entertainment, development of local talent, that's probably my interest the most. Merritt's always had a strong tradition of encouraging its youth to participate in the cultural events. Did you know that the band master at the high school is retiring this year? And there is not a real succession plan? Did you know that every single elementary school in the past always had a choir, put on special events? I don't believe there's a piano in any of the schools anymore. So our arts and culture that Merritt is home, homegrown stuff is disappearing, and I'm afraid that if we don't do something to make it stay, it's going to be gone, and then it'll be very difficult to get back. Development of a local talent, and that includes youth and seniors, dance, drama, educational programs, the Film Society, civic events, remembrance day, concert series, hosting special events, visiting choirs, orchestras, live screaming, screaming, live screening of sports events, ballet, opera. We have folks in Merritt that travel up to Kamloops on a regular basis to live screen the Metropolitan Opera. We could do that here. We could have watched the hockey game here. Yeah. So anyways, the possibility is mind-boggling. We only need an appropriate venue. In summary, we think the concept is feasible. We believe it is doable. We know it would be a benefit to Merritt. The decision tonight is whether you want to continue exploring the possibility of an addition to the Civic Center or not. It's a simple yes or no. Are there any questions? And I would like to is Rich, is there anything that you would like to add? Well, I didn't fall asleep anyways. So are there any questions?
Thank you, Kurt. So, you know, being a call meeting, there's no decisions that got made here tonight. This is just informational only. So I've got a couple of questions for you. The estimated cost of the building, what do you figure the cost of the building actually would be constructed at this point? Do you have any idea? I mean, you can ballpark it. I'm not asking you for
Yeah, and that, that's, that's all that we can do. When we were thinking of a separate building, and we had the property purchased in the downtown core and so on. At the time that we were doing that, it was estimated about three and a half million dollars. But that was for three small movie theaters, along with all the equipment that goes with them, and a larger performing arts facility. All that work was probably for not.
And that's, that's my question.
I think this one could probably be done for about two and a half to three million dollars. Because most of the building is there.
So conceptual drawings, architectural drawings, what are we looking at for that? Do you know? Two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand?
You could probably do it for less than two hundred thousand.
Less than two hundred?
Yeah.
So my question then being, so conceptual drawings are done. How do we raise the funds to build the building? Because the longer this sits on the shelf, the more
it does not, it does not. Problem with trying to estimate costs right now, but I think if you get when we were dealing with an architect for the other project, that's where we got our cost estimates from, that would probably be about three and a half million dollars.
See, for me, it's
That included the purchase of a
It's kind of like cart before the horse. We spend the money, you spend the money to do the drawings, and it sits for five years. That drawing's no longer any good.
The drawing is good.
But the pricing
But the price, prices are changing overnight.
Seal.
So in discussions with the Director of Public Works and Engineering, we discussed, you know, a drawing is, sits on the shelf. It's actually the architect. That's the important piece, or the engineer. So if that person is no longer available to the project, then it's no longer a certified drawing. So you would have to go back and you'd have to go back and get it reviewed at minimum, get it reviewed by another professional, who would then sign off on it. And/or when we think about the changes in building code, right? Building code changes every five or so years. So if it sits on the shelf for five years, you know, You know, at minimum, if you think about where your capital plan sits. And your financial situation is, you know that we're a minimum of five years away from being able to contribute anything near. Even half the cost of the theater. Then you end up in a situation where the building code is changed and the engineer of record may no longer be or may no longer be available to the project. So there are the potential for it to become stale dated as a as a drawing.
Thank you. So. I had some, how how many members do you have today? Do you know your membership?
The the membership is has been stagnant for a great many years now, simply because. Until you've got a an actual plan to work with.
Yeah.
There's no sense on having a meeting and staring at each other. We have. Four directors that are. Still with us. A few have passed on over the years or moved away and so on. So we have not done. A renewed membership. We certainly, we just wouldn't do it without having a plan in place.
So to raise the funds for the building, how do you envision that happening? Is that like grant funding or? Like, I'm just wondering how we the the fund situation, how do we raise two point five or three million dollars for this building? How's that work?
That's where if you've got a plan that you can present to the public. Then you go after corporate sponsors. I mean, we certainly had talks with the mine. Prior to this, we had talks with First Nations. We had. Several sponsors that were ready to to come on on board, but. You need to 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 say we're going to start. Before that can happen. I wouldn't. I know personally of several. Fairly well-to-do people that have indicated that they would love like to leave a legacy and so on, but I won't release their names, of course.
Counselor Turner.
You you answered my biggest question when you said that it is a city-owned. Building, part of building. So. If it's a city-owned building, then the city gets to decide who uses that. So. You would, I assume, if you want it, you would book ahead of time. And other than that, the city can use that facility for their.
Definitely, it's it's a city-owned owned building. They would have have to sign it out just like they do presently for. All the activities and that. Part of the plan that that we toyed with is if we've got money. At our disposal afterwards. Make it easy for the Arts Council.
I I think the janitorial, the the janitorial system would be impacted because I mean you are adding another. Part to the building, so it's it's more to clean and. So I I think it does impact the the janitorial system.
But there is a a benefit there too. You don't have to use your staff. To set up and take down the entire. Facility every single time it it changes users. I don't know if many of you were. Involved when Kenny Hess was here last time and the night before was the Chamber event. Staff worked extremely hard trying to. Dismantle part, put up the new, they were crossing bridges all the time. So. There's a a savings there. Yes, there's more floor to sweep. But only when it's being used as a theater. You know, and I'm assuming that the theater is not going to be used every night unless the city wants to go into the movie business.
I'll also piggyback on what the mayor stated that that in my opinion, I think that. Before a build starts, I think all of the money has to be secured. So that you're not. You know, starting something in the stopping, then waiting for more funding. I think that all the funding has to be in place.
Process until. Money is secure, but. This part, doing the planning. Is not related to that.
And you have the money for the architectural design?
Yes, we do.
Okay, that's my.
No, you you were on and now you've shut yourself off. There we go.
Okay, thank you. I I can appreciate how much effort that your society has put into this and I really appreciate it. I my question was what Counselor Sharny just mentioned was how much money do you actually have? To put into the starting portions of this venture?
Well, it depends on how you look at it.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you. There there is, and I I see my friend sitting in the back here. That there's a grant the city received that the society. Paid all expenses for doing and putting in the grant, but it was put in the city's name. For very good reasons, and that's a five hundred thousand dollar grant and. That's up to the city what they want to do with with that, but we have the funds to provide the other.
Okay, and and how much? I know that their time time is kind of of the essence. But I'm not sure when did they say that they would want this money back? How much time do we have to do all of this?
It depends on how we use the grants. Some of our money is absolutely safe. We we sold the property and and that's banked. Any of the fundraising money that we raised is ours. There's no restriction on it. There's a two hundred. We received a hundred thousand dollar grant, most of which was spent on architectural drawings. So we've used that. And some of that knowledge is is still valuable, not for the drawings themselves, but for the contacts that we made. There's a two hundred thousand dollar grant. That they would like to have spent as quickly as possible. They've been very generous with extending the deadlines. So. If we got the okay to to go ahead, we would spend that grant money first. Get rid of it.
Counselor Ogan.
Thank you. Okay, so overall, the idea is good. I'm trying to determine the feasibility of this project. I don't know if this project is feasible, the way how you are presenting it. So before you mentioned the one point two six, I my first thought is like, it's not feasible. Why? Because it would be very difficult to just to have the funds for the exploration, but not to have. Just to count on donations and grants to be able to to build, you know, the the remaining. So when we talk about the one point two six, are we talking about cash? Are we talking about in kind? Because that's going to help me understand the feasibility. Cash.
Cash.
Cash. So. It's tough, because this is a city property. So I need to understand where we are on staff, because if we have to handle, you know, all the. All the dealings with the architects to do any type of studies, that's going to be city staff and I will need to understand from staff. Where we are if we have the capacity.
So in this one point two six, I'm assuming the two fifty, three hundred thousand for conceptual will come out of that? Or is there a different grant for that? No, I would. Counselor Baxter.
Is there any way that we can retrofit the building that we already have without building onto it? Like, we could use the, at the high school, we have. Leechers that come out and retract.
Have you ever sat in those?
Well, we could.
Yeah, that that's okay for the for the young guys, you know. I just about died the last concert I was there.
Yeah, but we also put out chairs in front of the stages. As they come out, we can put out chairs in front, because what if it's not economically feasible? What if? We have a theater program and it doesn't get used?
So what?
So it just sits there empty and it's.
Then you're not using staff time and cleaning time.
Seal.
Would you like me to address a couple of those things concerns?
Feel free.
So Counselor Ogan's question about staff. I think council. And I think Counsel Ogan probably has a good sense of this. Based on the core infrastructure requirements that we need to address right now. And changes in our requirements. So recovery, core infrastructure, so water, sewer, roads. And some of the provincial requirements we have to update some services, particularly in development services. Were pretty flat out. We would basically have to have another project manager, full-time project manager on hand. To be able to manage any more work over the next five to ten years. That five-year capital plan that you have. That is a very big capital plan. And I think that half of our staff who are at the level of managing those projects works about forty hours extra per week. So I hundred percent love the idea of a theater. I believe in arts and culture. My children, one of the reasons we're moving south is because my children want to do things like music lessons and they want to participate in theater and those kinds of things. If the city was responsible for a million dollars of this project, just say, that is a ten percent tax increase. Hundred thousand dollars-ish per percent. And if we are responsible for a million, knowing that we do not have funds in reserve for this project, would be about a ten percent tax increase to raise that. Million in a year, to raise that million dollars. So if we were to get this done in a five-year period, you're probably looking at a three to four percent tax increase per year. To address this, because obviously every year, the cost of materials keeps going up, the cost of labor within state is going to continue to go up. So you're you, I wouldn't be surprised to see if we were going to put money away for this to build it within five years. You'd be looking at probably a three percent per year tax increase minimum.
May I answer that?
It gets pretty, pretty.
I think I've said it many, many times, you will not do this project. Till the funds are there. Have I once asked the city to contribute? To the building? Not once.
So.
You wouldn't start this thing unless you had commitments. From corporate sponsors, from donors. I know several donors already. That would be committed to substantial amounts of money. If. This goes ahead. If you don't have the money, you don't build it.
Walk walk me through how the RFP that you're thinking about is going to work. You've mentioned that you want us to do the request for proposal through the city, correct?
Well, no, that. That's why I asked, who does what? In talking to a previous administrator, he seemed to think that an IRP probably wasn't. Necessary. That you can ask for expressions of interest. To come into the city. I'd like to say that we would do everything, but it's not our building. And you wouldn't want. For somebody to come along and paste something on to a building of your own without having some say in it. Would you?
Seal.
So there would be several ways to do, to to to. Get proponents to do the design. However, they are essentially in the director of engineering and public works can can give some more clarity, but they're essentially the same time commitment. I know that Mr. Christopherson had asked about whether they could contract somebody to do it for them. Perhaps write it, but there's still, if if it's. If there's a, if this building belongs to the city, which it does, because it's attached to a city building, so ultimately it has to belong to the city. Because it's attached to the city building on city lands. There is still a responsibility for us to provide oversight. So again, even if we contracted out, there is still a responsibility for our staff to have oversight of any any project. That is currently underway, even if it is just in the design stage. So it doesn't eliminate the work. It may reduce work, but it certainly doesn't eliminate work. But doing a a request or expression of interest versus a request for proposals isn't going to greatly reduce. The the expectations around how we award a project.
So I see out the crowd, Mr. Brun is sitting out there. Could you come and give us your two cents on your perceived issue with the funding and? How it should be used, et cetera, et cetera? If I could just get you to introduce yourself and just explain to everybody here how this is happened.
Miles Brun is with the Ministry of Jobs, Economic Development, Innovation, and. Through a number of changes in government, I guess our branch is responsible for. Grants that Kurt had mentioned that are the five hundred thousand, which is held in trust by the city, plus the other grants that. Our programs, when we were Ministry of Forests in our branch, now we're Jobs Economic Development Innovation. So I I I guess I'll keep my comments limited to that and just say that. Leading up to tonight and discussions with the CEO, I checked with our folks in Victoria and. Suffice to say. I think the. There's probably going to be a request to the society and to the city to either spend those funds. You know, fairly quickly or return the money. Certainly don't think there's a five-year window of holding on to that grant money. And then that's, so that's one piece, I guess, in terms of the timing. The second piece, I guess, to think of is the. The conditions that the funds were for that half a million dollars were granted. Was really to support. Economic development and diversification in merit, and so. There may be some, I guess, conditions or restrictions that would be on that funding that we would probably need to see a formal change request for that. Money to reallocate it to a capital building project, for example, so. Not quite sure how that would be received. I guess my gut feeling is probably not, but again, we wouldn't know until we actually submit it, but. The biggest issue I think really is just the time factor, right? So.
Counselor Ogan.
Big question. So what about wages? So as it's clear that we don't have the capacity, could we use some of that funding? To be able to hire the person who can take care of that research for us?
I, again, I'll, I can't. I can make an educated guess, counselor. The funds that are with the Theater Society, there's probably a little bit more latitude with that in terms of this design build. Conversation. I certainly would say probably no to the five hundred thousand to, you know, to using that for. Either hiring a, you know, contractor or another city staffer or something like that, so.
Counselor, Counselor Baxter.
Could we find out what the restrictions are before we make a decision?
On.
How the money is spent?
Just so you're aware, Counselor, we're not making any decisions tonight.
Yeah. Again, I think. There's, you know, there's going to be, I guess, less leeway on the five hundred thousand. Again, I I I'm guessing, I can't really say for sure about. How that would be received if a request came from merit saying we wanted to. Put an addition on to the civic center. My best guess on the five hundred thousand is it probably wouldn't be approved because it's seen as a capital project. And not. Again, as it's been kind of outlined tonight, you know. It it may not be received as a a an economic development project. With the funds that the Theater Society has, that's, you know, it's a bit different. I I my best guess is that. That, you know. That probably wouldn't be too difficult to do a change request for. For the for the society. The biggest challenge again is all of this is just is the time, right? So. You know, because again, let's make the discussion tonight about your five-year financial plan and stuff. I can almost guarantee you that, you know, that those funds aren't going to be. You know, put aside for another five years, because it's been several years already that the funds haven't been spent, so.
Counselor Ogan.
Yeah, so I'd like to have some clarification here. So originally, when that grant application was submitted for the five hundred thousand. So what was the originally purpose for that grant? So to use in what?
It was to support. I guess the original concept of the movie theater slash arts. So so it was. You know, the the original concept was it was going to create jobs and. And help diversify the economy in merit, so. That, you know, again, that's stretching back a number of years.
Seal.
So if the if we're required to return that five hundred thousand dollars. Or ask for it to be repurposed, that is not to say that similar types of grants won't continue to be available. If we were to be able to meet those requirements for. Various types of cultural or arts and funding, arts and cultural kinds of things. It's. We may have to return this if in five years we're ready to go. There's the opportunity for us to apply on other types of grants.
Yeah, and I'm.
Or the Theater Society.
Yeah, I'm probably not the, you know, being from the Economic Development Ministry and not the Arts Ministry or whatever, or the federal government, so I'm probably not the best person to speak to that. But I would say yes, obviously, if there are grant programs that, and certainly that was one of the questions I asked about. You know, are there any? Um, you know, are there any consequences, so to speak, for the city if they returned that five hundred thousand? And the answer was no, you can continue to apply to our, you know, our grant programs, no problem. Um, the one thing I will say, and I'm not sure it's the right time, but. There, you know, because that money is held in trust by the city. There is an opportunity for the city to rather than return that funding to. Request reallocation for that funding to an economic development project within the city, you know, in the near term, right? So again, now, don't know what that would be, but I, you know, that was one of the questions I asked was, do they have, you know, if they can't spend it, do they have to send it back? And the answer was, if we can come up with a project that works, then certainly we can look at that. Again, I say this just because I don't want you to think that it's a, you know, the money's gone. There's an opportunity there. It's just that it, it's, it's going to be. Looked at through the lens of is this furthering merits economic development, diversification or not?
Counselor Turner.
Uh, CAO was mentioning looking for grants. I'm a little confused here. Whose responsibility is this? The society or the cities that would be looking for grants, et cetera?
See you.
Well, I mean, that would, if we're building a building, the society can certainly be responsible for that. But if something happens and the society no longer is in existence and we're. Have promised the community a theater, then yeah, the expectation is that we would. There are also grants they may not be able to apply on, that we would be able to apply on, and that we would have to do it in their, on their behalf. So ultimately, they become the responsibility of the city, which is sounds like this is five hundred thousand dollars with something like that where perhaps they were not able to apply on it. Directly. Um, and so the city probably submitted it, they submitted the application on their behalf, and so that's why it's in trust to us. That's probably something like that. I'm sure Mr. Christopherson could probably clarify, but I mean, ultimately. I guess it depends, right? If we're promised a theater and for some reason they can't get the money together, then the city is responsible for that money.
Counselor.
Yeah, so it seems that the eligibility requirements for this grant are broad, so I think that like Counselor Baxter said, we can review those ones. Uh, we have a need right now for the civic center. If it's not the, the expansion for, for this. Uh, we can, you know, perhaps utilize those ones for the upgrade of the sound system or any other upgrades that, that civic center. Much need. So uh, I think that could be an option, and my recommendation for council could be to treat these two, two items separate. One, we have to deal with the five hundred thousand, and one we have to deal with the request from, from the Arts Council. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brun?
Just to, just not quite sure, Counselor Logan, where you were going with that, but if you were thinking of the five hundred thousand for. Lights and sound systems and stuff like that, I, I did check on that, and that was, I was told that probably wouldn't be considered eligible under the five hundred. So.
Economic development.
So why?
Jobs. Yeah. Yes, see you.
I've, uh, uh, Mr. Brun and I have talked about a few things, but one of the things that we have been looking at, um, is. We can't change the footprint of the building under the green municipal funds from FCM. Um, but we can retrofit the building in its current footprint, and of course, we would have to have some, um. Some funding to match, but ultimately, the civic center needs to be updated. Seals, you probably, you may remember there were a number of requests around. The HVAC system and the flooring and the roof and the siding, and there's a lot of parts to the civic center. Um, and if we were approaching it potentially, as you said, uh, from a, we are updating our conference center. Inside, it would have to be inside the same footprint to get green municipal funding, so we wouldn't be able to attach additional theater space as a part of that retrofit. We would no longer be eligible for that. So we are looking at opportunities to find funding to support upgrading the civic center to a better conference space. Um, and then we would have to be able to show, you know, for things like lights and sound systems, we have money here. For these things, this grant applies and this grant applies. It's kind of like puzzling this money together based on the things we need to do. So we could potentially ask that of the funding funders, um, to see if that would work, but we're still trying to figure out how to find all the money.
Thank you. You have a question for Mr. Brun? Thank you, Miles.
Thank you, worship.
Mr. Christopherson.
I just checked with, with Miles. One, one of the things that we did. Um, the person who was in charge of most of our grants, Matthew Scott Von Creath. Came up to merit. I walked him through the building. Visualized what the plan was, and at that time, he thought it was a wonderful idea. Okay. And I want to return that we're not, you're not making a commitment tonight to build it. You don't know what you would be building. You won't know what might be built. Until you find out what the engineers and the architects would say. Okay? You obviously know I'm not an architect by the drawing I gave you tonight. Okay, that's a concept. If you're interested in exploring the concept of whether the building can be added on to. Then say yes or no. That's all that you have to do at present, to go on. What about this and what about that? We won't have any answers if we don't do the exploration. So I will leave that with you, and hopefully, we can move forward to finding out whether it's even possible. If it's possible, then the money will be filed. And it won't be from the taxpayers. We made that commitment twelve years ago. Yep.
For us to put that on the agenda for a decision next week, or would you like a longer time to think this through? How would you like to manage that? So first meeting in June, perhaps? Thank you.
Yeah, first meeting in June, let's do it that way. All right. Uh, unfinished business, none. Five new business, five point one City of Merit zoning bylaw, Mr. Purnesh Jani, manager, planning and development services. Will present. Purnesh, you are up. I'll get you to push that button.
Bamble, Purnesh?
Sure.
Uh, I'm just going to preamble you, Purnesh. Um, so just so councils aware. The zoning bylaw update that we've, we're working on here is to implement the legislated requirements for densification. Um, Purnesh and Kresha were able to find a few ones. That related to the OCP that were not aligned with the zoning bylaw, so there was some touching on that. But we will do this all again before the end of twenty twenty five. This one will not have a public hearing. Normally, our zoning bylaw has to have a public hearing. There is no public hearing for this one because it's legislated.
Purnesh, you're up.
Thank you, worship. Uh. You're good. Thank you, worship. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, thank you for providing us the opportunity to present the proposed zoning by law amendments. To the committee of the whole, uh, development services staff has been working really hard, uh, to, while, uh, to preparing, for preparing these amendments and. And along with the support from other departments, so I'm, I'm thankful for the staff and, and the support that we, we got. Next, please. So in this presentation, uh, we will discuss why the zoning bylaw, uh, needs to be amended. We will also touch base with the, with the, uh, small-scale multi-housing legislation, which is also known as Bill forty-four. And some of the key aspects of the, of the legislation and its intent. We will also walk the committee through, uh, the proposed amendments. To the current zoning bylaw, and we will be happy to address any questions, concerns, uh, after the presentation and. There is, there will be an opportunity to discuss the proposed amendments after the presentation. And at the end, committee of the whole will know about the next steps required for the, for the zoning by amendments. Uh, local governments in British Columbia are required to amend their zoning bylaw to comply with the new, uh. Small-scale multi-unit housing legislation. Uh, the intent of the Bill forty-four or this legislation is to encourage, uh, variety of housing. Housing forms in single-family and duplex areas, so the zones which are currently. The zones which allows a single, uh, family residential and, and duplex residential, uh. Those zones will be now are required to have, uh, other types of housing as well. This will increase the housing supply, create diversity in housing choices. Which will over time put contribute into more affordable housing in PC. Local governments can no longer zone for exclusively for, uh, single-family or duplex dwellings. Except there's, except if they're exempted for, from the legislation. And, uh, apart from the legislative amendments, staff is also proposing additional amendments, uh, to the zoning bylaw, which are consistent with the, uh, official community plan. So the Bill forty-four requires local governments to amend and adopt the zoning bylaw, uh, by June thirty, twenty twenty four. As per the legislation, a minimum three or four, um, units must be allowed. The property owners can still develop, uh, with fewer units, but the local governments must allow minimum three to four units, uh, based on the parcel size. While preparing for the, for the zoning by law amendments, um. Staff has utilized provincial policy manual and site standard supporting local governments with housing. Uh, this, uh, manual was released by the province in December seven, twenty twenty-three. This manual contains, uh, guidelines, recommendation from province regarding. Parcel size, parcel area, parking and setback requirements, et cetera. And local governments must consider any applicable guidelines for, for small-scale multi-unit housing, including this policy manual while making. Updates the zoning bylaws. Some of the key aspects of the, of the legislation, uh, as per the, uh, legislation secondary suites and access. Their accessory dwelling units, which, which is actually detached accessory dwellings in our zoning bylaw, they must be permitted in all residential zones. Which permits single detached housing and semi-detached housing. The legislation also requires local governments to amend their residential zones within the urban containment boundary, which is city of merits, uh, administrative boundary. To permit a minimum of three dwellings on properties less than or equal to two hundred and eighty square meters area. And minimum of, uh, four dwellings on properties which has an area of greater than tw- two hundred and eighty square meters. The city will require, uh, require, required, required a report from qualified professionals in case web developers are intending to. Develop in hazardous areas. And new legislation will allow multi-unit apartments, multi-unit townhomes, and those kind of, uh, housing types or developments in all residential zones. This will allow, uh, inclusion of more housing options and dwelling units on residential parcels. There are certain exemptions, uh, are provided in this legislation, um. And these exemptions will not apply to city of merit since most of the developed areas within the city of merit have water and sewer services. And city of merit doesn't have, currently doesn't have any protected heritage properties, so that exemptions regarding the heritage properties will not apply to us. And we don't have any transit-oriented development, developed, transit-oriented development area, so, um, those are the requirements regarding transit. Transit-oriented development will not apply to city of merit. The secondary suites and accessory dwelling units, uh, must be permitted on lots restricted to single-family use. And local governments can be selective in allowing the different combinations of the dwelling units. For example, uh, only one secondary suite, suite can be allowed, or only one accessory dwelling units can be allowed, and then landowners or property owners can choose. Either secondary suites or ADU, or maybe both of them, based on their desires. The current zoning bylaw, uh, allows secondary suites in majority of the residential zones. Except R four, which is residential modular zone and R five mobile home park, so. We already, this current bylaw is already allowing secondary suite and, uh, detached secondary dwellings or ADUs in, uh, as a secondary use. In the, in these zoning bylaws. Some of the, I'd like to point out, like, some of the proposed amendments are legislative, while some of them are recommended by the staff. Um. All, pretty much all the sections of zoning bylaw, except part one and part three, um, requires amendments, and. For example, part two, uh, we have added some new definitions. And we have revised the current, uh, current definitions to align with the small-scale multi-unit housing legislation and provide some clarity to the, to the, uh, residents. In part four, um, some extra regulations have been added, and, and some of the current regulations have been revised. Um, in part five, uh, as recommended by the province, uh, parking, reductions in parking is proposed. For residential developments. And in part six, uh, landscaping requirements have been reduced to allow, uh, small-scale multi-unit housing. Uh, part seven would comprise substantial amendments regarding, uh, consolidating, consolidating multiple residential zones. Uh, there has been increase in density and addition of multiple unit residential developments such as apartments, townhouse, townhouses. Triplex and fourplexes in, in residential zones. And at, at the end, the current official zoning bylaw map will, will, will be, uh, revised by reflecting those, those, um. Changes. So we'll start with part two interpretation, uh. So a new definition of modular building and single real estate entity has been added. Uh, the current bylaw has modular home definition, which is restricted to only single detached housing. So the new modular building definition. Will replace the modular home definition, and it will be more encompassing, encompassing for other buildings. And, um, a definition of single real estate entity was added, um. So that detached secondary dwellings cannot be sold separately. So if you can see infographic here. Um, the first one has a single, single-family home and, and detached accessory dwelling, so they both form a single real estate entity. And the second one has duplex and then. One duplex and then the, uh, the accessory dwelling unit behind that, that part of the duplex, they form a single real estate entity. And the third one, the third infographic has, uh, one people, townhome, uh, type of development, and there is an accessory dwelling. We need attached to it. So when somebody is selling those, like selling those properties, they both, um. They have to sell both of the, both of the things, not just, they cannot sell, so sell the. Accessory dwelling unit separately and the house separately. That's, that was the intent, to introduce this, this definition.
So Purnesh, and maybe, uh, Mr. Green, you can answer this. This is one of the questions that I've had with the province. Is if we take a single unit lot and we put four groups on there. How do we sustain our sewer and water that was only built for single unit? Now we have four on it. Uh, is this going to start causing us issues? Let's say on a street, we end up with somebody. And four of these go in, so we have another sixteen people that weren't there before. How is that going to affect our single-use water or, or sewer line as opposed to what's there now? I mean, and I. Well, I, 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 I'm not trying to put you on the spot, Purnesh, but I can't get an answer from the government on this, so I don't expect one from you as well, because they don't know. We've also had the other question is where does everybody park? Well, they park on the road. Well, how do we pick up garbage and power roads? So these are the questions, and, 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 and I, I, I guess I'll, I'll let you take a stab at it. Because the minister certainly can't at this point, so I'll, I'll see what you have to say.
So.
See you.
Thank you. Ultimately, um, these, like, like many communities have said. These, this new legislation was developed in places where there's no snow. Right? We, we hammered home to you how painful it is to do snow removal, removal when there's cars parked all over the road. So legislation that's developed in Victoria that is actually really fundamentally needed in the lower mainland. Right? Where there's no snow. Because it's legislated. It doesn't, doesn't, yeah, they, they've heard that. They heard that at their housing forum, that this is, they did not consult. With local governments. They did not consider local governments in different contexts. Um, I think that was the message that was sent home by most of the local governments. Um, so that's an issue. Um so that's an issue for sure, we you know, we can make some operational adjustments to meet those those issues. But again, that's something the director and. His team and I will have to go through, the other thing about the the water and sewer is that ultimately. In legisla- in the new bylaw. The development planning and development team will still have the ability to say no, because we can't. Meet the requirements that that demand on our water sewer. So if there are ten lots and the first two people come, and we don't know, we haven't talked about this, the first two owners of lots come and they say we wanna build. Two fourplexes on those lots. Fourplex on each lot, maybe that gets us the capacity on our water sewer, but that's why it's really important that we continue to invest in modeling. Uh we have a couple of water sewer projects around modeling our our flows um that the director is working with. So we have to have that information. You know, you know, there's a lot of reasons why we need to have that information, but as we talk about densification that is being required from a higher level of government. That we don't have a whole lot of say on, we have to rely on those flow those flow models. Um and we have to be able to give empower. And the mayor's great at this, empower our team, our professional team to say yay or nay to a project and whether or not it works within a certain area. You know, lots of people come to the mayor to make complaints. And he is right when he tells them, you need to meet with that team because they are professionals in making those decisions and they have all the information around. Water supply and sewage supply and geotechnical needs and all of those things in their heads. So we're making sure the bylaw allows them to continue to to say yay or nay to those projects. But we have to do this as part of the legislation.
So a couple of things, your honor, the. Regarding the existing infrastructure, yes, we're working on managing models. Ourselves basically in the water and sewer, and we wanna do stormwater in the next little while as well, so every time there's a development that is. Considering developing, we can enter that information into the models and then determine. What upgrades to the existing system that that particular development is gonna require. And then we can either require them to upgrade the infrastructure to make it appropriate. Or they can choose not to do what they're doing if that's cost prohibitive for them. The other thing when we talk about. The on-street parking and the room for plowing and for uh trash collection, et cetera. Uh emergency vehicles more than anything. I've seen a number of different design elements added um in recent times in different communities where the carriage ways. Are narrower to accept the vehicles that need to go down them. But then we're using curves and things to separate a parking area, so it's a little bit more visual, so we're not physically parking. Directly in the carriage ways, so the carriage ways stay available for the functions we need them to. And then possibly in a newer development houses might get set back more, we might have a wider right of way. With a curb line and something to park up on top of this, not physically in the carriage way. There's a number of design elements we can probably use over time when we update our design standards as well, that can accommodate. Both if it's street parking, but I think the the key element there is gonna be the actual physical carriage way that needs to carry the. The waste trucks, the emergency vehicles and plowing would be separate from the parking. Doesn't mean we don't have room in the right of way to park people, we just gotta get that separated from the carriage ways.
In the other presentation that we had, not this one, I was talking about the parking uh where people didn't have a frontage, maybe the the lot, I think it was. Maybe they didn't have front parking or front driveway, so I was wondering if if we change the zoning, how those dwellings would be affected, because if you can have. Up to four units on one lot and right now it's not set up that way, would it be maybe implemented that they would have to have a setback for parking at the back? Or would we then maybe change the zoning so that we also had the cost charges built into the project so that if you. Were having to upgrade the lot to accommodate the sewage that, okay, you're gonna have to pay this set amount of fees because we're gonna have to put wider. Grainage pipe or whatever the case may be, or that was one question, and then on the other one, I was kinda wondering if um. You know, if if people said, okay, we wanna apply for a four unit, maybe they could only have. A multi-unit, and if so, what would be the setbacks if you wanted to have the fourplex with. An um uh accessory dwelling unit with a rental in it, or would it have to be a carriage house with a garage, I don't know.
So yeah, so the 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 province has very kindly provided us with all the setbacks for all the kinds of scenarios. Um which is why we were able to get this done, if we had to decide on that ourselves, we would not have this done by the end of June. With the the. Any development that we require of them to meet our standards, whether they're off-street. On-street, off-street parking, like on-street parking, but that's not really on the street, uh would be part of their development, the cost of their development, we're not gonna. And we also have to operationally say also that we're not gonna come up there and shovel around your vehicle, right, we plow the road. But we can't get out and shovel around vehicles, just like we don't shovel around vehicles right now, you don't move your vehicle, you get plowed in. There's not a whole lot we can do about that if you're street parking, so those are operational things that we have to take into consideration with these changes. We also are in the process this year, it's on our docket to start working on our development standards by law. So that will determine how wide will the will we have to widen roads. We're probably unlikely to change the way parking happens on current roads, but as new developments come in. We'll have to be looking at those, do the roads have to be wider to account for the parking? Do we do some creative parking, does that creative parking then cost the 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 developer? Those are all questions that we have to come to an answer on, so you will see lots of stuff about development and planning this year. And the O C P, cause we have to do the O C P by the end of twenty twenty five, so all of this stuff will be included in the O C P, the zoning by law, the development standards by law. As we move forward, the other question about services, those services, so let's say that. The appropriate sized line is two blocks away from the new development. We can require them to remediate all the way to the proper sized line. So in order to 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 focus on that development, we can go back as far as we need to, we don't have to invest in that ourselves. We can also change how we apply D C Cs and what we were doing the D C C by law right now, um what things those development cost charges are applied to. As we move forward, we have to have a new D C C by law by the end of twenty twenty five as well. Right, so we're in the process of that as well, so there are a lot of unanswered questions. And we're only doing this right now because we're mandated by the provincial government.
Can I can I add a little bit to that? So I think one thing to think of when we're doing these broad strokes on a bylaw like this, it's not gonna satisfy answers on every. Particular project, so I think we have to look at every project that comes down as standalone and how it. Works within the bylaw, works within all the other things, so I don't think we're gonna get a broad stroke that covers every question. But these bylaws are made. To guide us to where they need to go, and we look at each project, how it fits in to the scheme and what they have to do and just look at it independently. We're not gonna be able to go across the city and envision how everything's gonna look at this point, we're just trying to get into compliance with. What the government says we have to on this density issue. And then look at each project going forward on how it applies.
So in the end, would it be that a person could apply and have up to four units? Subject to approval by approving officer then, like is that what we'll end up with?
So the other question I've got, step code system, are they willing to change that or are they gonna still stay with the step codes? Cause I mean, that's just adding cost and time, right, so I mean, we're at step three on a step code, we get to step five.
Yeah, I think that's.
Could take ten years.
Yeah, I think that's another another issue that probably hasn't been pulled off through yet.
Well, we probably need to focus on it because that's what's gonna derail this whole thing, that means the step codes.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor, so that's a building code issue, the building code was. Is being updated in twenty twenty four, or it's just finished being updated in twenty twenty four, um and our building bylaw. Has it's like nineteen eighty two, um so we're just updating that, we have not in the city adopted the step code, so unless we're being mandated by the building code. Um by the provincial building code, uh to be at a certain step, we haven't individual, some communities have adopted up to step five already. We're not, we're not, we're certainly not getting ahead and we're only doing what's mandated currently in the building code, provincial building code. Uh because step five, as you said, uh really makes it challenging for small developers. Or private homeowners uh builders to be able to afford to get to that step, so we're. We're staying as low as we can in the process.
Yep, and I think.
For as long as we can.
I think as council, it's up to us to ask that question, uh that could would, you know, completely cause a problem in the future, it's up to us to ask that question. You know, announcements are great, but if you can't make the announcements work, what's the point?
So maybe that's a U B C M resolution.
Most likely it's going to be. Along with one other, Council Echart, are you uh done there?
I just think that's a good idea, because the thing is, is that if we were asking for some concessions or rebates for builders. If they have to follow the step code, that could be a great thing at our next ask for U B C M. Just thought it was brilliant, that's all.
To you, to you, Mister Purnesh.
Thank you. Can you go to next slide, please? Some of the current definitions such as accessory buildings, detached accessory dwellings, uh front building line, uh. These definitions have been revised to make provisions to include multiple principal buildings on a parcel. Since the new legislations will allow more than one principal buildings on parcel. Similarly, definitions for apartment, townhomes, uh semi-detached dwellings is been revised to include provisions for modular buildings, apartments and townhomes. And now uh apartments, townhomes, uh semi-detached dwellings can be made using modular buildings. Part four, general regulations. So we have added some new provisions uh to allow more than one principal buildings uh. As the new legislation allows uh more than one principal link on the parcel. Then a new section for accessory dwelling unit has been added as an umbrella term to improve clarity. Uh these regulations are added uh for multiple, oh. Some regulations for the multiple accessory dwelling units on parcels are added. Uh I would like to uh note that uh the council has an option to reconsider the maximum number of accessory dwelling units on a parcel, currently we have recommended maximum uh three. Uh accessory dwelling units on a parcel. And and the the intent of the um uh having a maximum three number of units is to increase the density on a residential zone, so that's why a maximum. Sorry, it's a maximum number of uh a parcel can have maximum number of three accessory dwelling units. And based on um area of a parcel, so if a parcel has area less than or equal to two hundred and eighty square meters and maximum three accessory dwelling units are allowed. And if a parcel has an area of more than two hundred and eighty square meters, then greater of four units or one per dwelling unit.
Yeah, actually the difference between a detached secondary dwelling and a. Uh what's this accessory dwelling?
So accessory dwelling unit contains both secondary suites and detached detached accessory dwelling units. Presh, would you like to comment on this?
So um we never had a term of accessory dwelling unit. So we are introducing this term just to align with how the other parts of province use A D U's. And the A D U's consists both a secondary suite and a detached secondary dwelling. So a secondary suite can be contained within the principal building or the principal use. Or within the detached secondary dwelling on the same parcel. And a detached secondary dwelling is. Uh a separate building from the main building or from the principal building. So for example, if you have a single family, so for example, if you have a single family residential. Then you can contain a secondary suite within that single family residential and have a detached building. On the site, which will be called a detached secondary dwelling in it.
Thank you. So yeah, we have added some new regulations regarding detached secondary dwellings. And secondary suites, I think this diagram. Yeah, some new regulations for detached secondary dwellings and secondary suites have been added. I think this diagram explains that the secondary suite can be can be within the principal dwelling, uh that that diagram on your on your right. So yeah, uh the principal building can contain secondary suites within the building. And as per recommend, as per the proposed amendments, uh they have to have a fire separation as well. So yeah, this uh infographic shows like different types of secondary suite, so you can have a secondary suite in a single family or duplex or like multi-unit townhomes.
So each of those townhomes, so that fourplex can have a secondary suite as well, okay, so it ends up being eight units.
It's like the K-Tel patty stacker back in the day, make your own hamburgers.
Part four, uh general regulations, uh. So we have. I recommended that driveway access, well, so driveway access for a parcel was reduced from six meters to three meters. So currently the zoning by law allows six meter width of driveway access. So we have an proposed amendment to reduce that width from six meters to three meters to allow more on-street parking. Reduce amount of the frontage that is used for driveway access, uh this will increase the amount of space required for on-street parking. Driveway uh may be widened within the property. By 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 the developer, if developer wants to like have a wider driveway, so just the partial access can be three meters and then. Then uh within the property, within the property, within the property, they can have like they can have wider driveway. And that driveway can be a point six meters away from the front parcel line. There would be uh no restriction for access where the rear rear parcel line abuts a lane, so if a parcel has a lane at the back. And that will serve as an alternative to reduce driveway access on the front and encourage lane access wherever possible. So the intent is to encourage lane access wherever possible and reduce the uh. And have a reduced driveway width for parcels, so that more uh on-street parking can be provided.
Um I assume that the city has a side yard setback. Has the provincial government changed that, decreased that, that in contrary to what we currently have?
I think currently, uh you want.
I I can't say for sure about the side setback, but they have provided us with the recommended setback per parcel size. Um that will allow for a more building room. But I can't say for sure, but but it's still the set, the setback would still be meeting all the fire requirements, like it wouldn't minimize those. So whatever it is currently, it's five, three point something meters to the. Property line, it would still meet all the fire requires provincial fire code requirements.
Could I ask one other thing, it maybe this isn't appropriate time, but. How does all of this affect city taxes, uh cause parcel taxes are gone on frontage, now you have a frontage, but you got. Four units, so how can you have frontage when they're in the back? So how is it going to affect our taxes uh when you are taxing a piece of property, have have they given you any I any explanation on how to do that?
Uh so our property tax is based on the assessed value of the land and the the um improvements. So if somebody builds a fourplex instead of a single family, it will have a different assessed value. With regards to parcel tax, I believe how we assess parcel tax is how we assess parcel tax. We don't have to necessarily do it the same way another municipality does, so when we're talking about parcel tax, you're right, it could change that every. Service onto the property. If if there are four separate services onto the same parcel, maybe that changes. If if there are four separate services onto the same parcel, maybe that changes how the parcel tax is done. So we will have to look, go back and look at that um and how it impacts parcel tax. That's a a really good question. Um, because you're right, I mean, if we were to densify and fill all of those units. That would potentially change the capacity demand for our water treatment and our wastewater treatment. So um if that is the case, uh, then we would want to assess how we do parcel tax. We may not have anybody take us up on this, right? We don't even know. Again, nobody. Asked us if we had a whole big influx of people. We do have people looking for for places to live, right? We've got people living in hotels. Um, whether it's the level of densification that the province imagines, I think that's. We had some people that were already planning multi-unit developments, some that were planning um so up near uh. Uh. Between Springbank and like across from No Frills. That Forks there, so they're looking at, you know, they've got some multi-unit residential. They have some multi-use, so commercial on the bottom, residential on the uppers. Um, so they they were coming in with a very mixed neighborhood um prior to these changes. So I don't think that that would necessarily change how they approach it because they were already pretty densified. Whereas, you know, we have a couple of other developers coming in who are developing lots up on the bench. Um, that are decent sized lots, somebody who's purchasing purchasing that lot could come to us and say, want to do a book, want to do a threeplex. Right? We don't know. So.
Yes, back to you.
Yeah, consideration, I can provide some clarity regarding the setbacks. So currently, uh, we have exterior setbacks of two point eight meters. And interior setbacks of one point two meters for for the uh for the for the. For parcels, but this might, this is based on like parcel access as well. So each parcel will have a different set of requirements. For example, corner parcel will have a different type of setback requirements. So but yeah, we can, we can check internally and get back to you on that question and go provide you some clarity. Okay, next slide. So the um current da- density bonus table is revised to allow bonus of at least one dwelling unit for providing public benefit. Uh, the current zoning power has uh um like allows density bonus in terms of in percentage. So one dwelling unit is added so that developers can include uh one additional dwelling unit for providing uh public benefit. For example, if a proposed development has a community amenity such as daycare, plaza space, playground, community garden or rooftop garden. Then developers can get five percent density bonus or at least one dwelling unit bonus, whichever is greater. And then some regulations regarding short-term rentals and home-based businesses are added as well. So part five parking uh and loading requirements. So parking for uh secondary suites and detached secondary dwellings is reduced. For example, if the property has two or fewer detached secondary dwellings and suites. At least one parking space would be required. And for each additional unit, point five space per unit is required. So for two or less units, one parking stall. Three units, it will be a two park, two parking stalls will be required. And parking for uh three bedroom units, bedroom units is reduced from one point five spaces per dwelling. Unit to one space per dwelling unit. And communal and shared parking is encouraged. These are the minimum parking standards required. Uh, the developer may choose to include more parking as required.
So Purnesh, I have a question for you.
Hmm.
Let's say we have a four building situation. And every single person in there has a home-based business. They have to have a park designated parking spot for people that are doing business at their home-based business, do they not?
So in our parking table, we also have some provision for home-based business. So when they apply for a business license, we also check on those parking conditions. When we are reviewing the business license application or the home-based business.
Okay, so the whole place could be a parking lot.
Essentially.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Presh.
Uh, new provisions, new provisions are proposed for street frontage parking reduction. For developers to maximize frontage and minimize driveway access to the parcel. Where a parcel has a primary access from a lane and no access from the front, a reduction of one parking space is 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 recommended. And where a parcel has an access from the front, a reduction of point five parking spaces. For each continuous distance of six meters along the front person's parcel line, uninterrupted by driveway access. The intent is to encourage developers to reduce street frontage access, encourage lane access wherever possible. For developments, it will reduce parking requirements by one space if access is primarily from lane and not from the front. If parcel has a front access and can provide six meter continuous frontage. Along the front parcel line, then reduction is the recommended reduction is point five. But point five, you point five per frontage.
That's three.
Yeah, how much is point five of a parking spot? Have a car?
That's why we're expecting everybody to get those little tiny cars now.
Yeah, well, good luck. What if they have two vehicles and a motorhome and and and?
Um. Perhaps um Mr. Chaney could say how much we previously required as the minimum. So you have a comparison. So previously we required.
Hmm, we can.
You have that table, right?
Yeah.
So previously we required one and a half parking space for any three bedroom minute or more. And one parking space for two bedroom, one bedroom and bachelor suites. And one, one parking space per accessory dwelling unit or a secondary suite. Now we are requiring one parking space for three bedroom minute, but one point five for a four bedroom minute. And the parking calculations may get complicated for accessory dwelling units. But we are trying to reduce the parking requirements for those just to encourage more accessory dwelling units. Within the backyards or within the main building. That is in line with what the province is recommending the local governments do.
They're looking for is more building space and less parking space. Right? They want you to be able to put your carriage house or accessory dwelling unit on there and not take it up with.
Again, designed for large cities, not smaller rural, blue collar communities.
I think if you think about transit as well, right? Like. We're in some of this, we're assuming people don't have vehicles. And they're using transit because they live in a city with transit every ten minutes. Whereas our transit system does not work at that capacity nor will it without a significant increase in our taxation. Um, so again, not necessarily looking at rural communities.
This gets more exciting every minute.
So I just want to emphasize on the fact that uh most of the city of merit on zones. Allowed a secondary suite within a dwelling unit already. And this zoning ballot was updated in twenty twenty. Or adopted in twenty twenty. We have not seen so much of a demand for um. Multi-unit, but. There's a possibility we'll start seeing this since this uh amendment. But these zoning ballot was adopted in twenty twenty and it is going to be a slow process. And we may have some plans with the public works department before it takes off.
Excellent. So I'm glad you guys are sitting in that seat. Back to you, Mr. Purnesh.
Yeah, next slide, please. So we have allowed a bonus for at least one dwelling unit for providing public benefit. And accessible parking will be required for more than nine parking spaces. And then minimum rival length is reduced from five meters to four point eight meters to match the small size vehicle space. In part six landscaping and screening, uh. Landscaping confirming to the crime prevention through environmental design is required for the residential development. Of nine unit, nine or more units. Landscaping would not be required for small-scale multi-housing and smaller developments. We have to part seven. So we have provided a comparison table, uh. So the R one, R one A, R two and R six from the current zoning ballot will be combined. Will like would be combined into a proposed. R one low density residential zone allowing uh. Single, single detached, semi-detached, uh, multi-unit residential. Apartments and townhomes as a principal use, whereas detached secondary dwellings and secondary suite will be permitted as a secondary use. Current R two and R one A zones uh will no lo- no longer, no longer required. Since the new R one zone will have similar principal uses and secondary uses. And since the new R one zone will allow all types of residential uses within the prescribed density. The current R six uh strata parcel residential zone will no longer require since strata developments are already. Permitted in in all residential zones.
So Purnesh, on that slide. Where you've got principal uses and then you've got discretionary uses, short-term rental, short-term rent, that column will basically be removed or not? Because they're not allowing short-term rental anymore. Is that the whole idea of this thing? I don't know, really? Yeah. Good, thank you. Excellent, thank you.
Okay, moving on to next slide. Uh, so proposed uh low density residential zones as required by the legislation, the new R one zone will have three units. Uh, three units will be allowed for parcels with area uh. Equal to or less than two hundred eighty square meters and. In parcels over two hundred eighty square meters, four units or forty units per hectare, whichever great, whichever is greater will be will be permitted. And for apartments and townhomes houses.
Oh, which you done, right? Counselor Etchar.
Um, I was just wondering where you say the two hundred eighty square meters, since the average lot is whatever fifty by a hundred or. What is the average city lot size?
Fifty by hundred, some are seventy by a hundred.
So what does that work out to? Would that be the average city lot or is that smaller or bigger? Well, it's just the thing is, is when you present this, I'm just. Well, that's what I was just kind of wondering because I was just thinking, wait a minute, because I mean, because you know, what does this translate to? Because if you have a city law.
So. It really is gonna depend. So it's gonna depend on the. Um, what size the lot is.
Yeah.
Right? So some of the, there are some areas where we have ten thousand square foot lots. And there are some areas where the average size lot is five thousand square feet. Right? So you, so it really is dependent on the the neighborhood. And how a developer designates their lots for sale. So what size they're going to be subdivided to. Um, but ultimately, the goal is that relatively small lots. Can still host a three unit. Like that two eighty, I don't know what is in square feet, but the idea is that relatively small lots should still be able to have three units on.
Anything under two eighty.
Anything under two eighty.
Still have the three units.
Yeah, so you could have a five thousand square foot lot. With a principal unit, with a secondary suite, with a detached accessory dwelling. So, you know, think about Counselor Baxter, how big is your lot, you know? Counselor Ogan? So if you imagine your house with at least one separate living unit. How that might look. Yours doesn't count, yours is big.
Six thousand. An average wise.
Fifty by a hundred.
No, if you want, it's one hundred by seventy. But I'm an old one, so. Counselor Etchar?
Yeah. Oh, that's good. Thanks.
Mr. Purnesh, you're back on.
Hey, moving on to the next slide. So in R one zone, we have recommended to reduce the parcel size and increased height regulations. So these regulations are utilized from the current R two zone. Which allows uh two hundred twenty five square meters parcel area and three-story height. The maximum three-story height for the dwelling, uh, single, single, single-family dwelling and semi-detached dwelling. And multiple townhome would would be beneficial to allow secondary suites on the on the ground floor. Accommodate additional detached secondary dwellings in the parcel, on a parcel and reduced. And and reduced building footprints so that uh more space is available for for more yard space is available. The the three-story height is already allowed in the current R two zone. And the revised maximum density requirements would align with the requirements of the uh legislation. Uh, the council has an option to refuse these amendments as. And in that case, uh, the staff will have to bring back the R two zone. In the in the bylaw and that that R two zone will have um um. Three-story uh height and then parcel size requirements. So R one and R two zone will be separated, separated out again. If council considers to um refuse these amendments. So we will, we will have like R one zone and R two zone. Again, currently as per the uh amended amendment, we don't have R two zone.
I just have a quick question and I'm I'm not very good at this kind of stuff, but. Um, I understand that when we, you know, certain developments, when they get a certain size, they have to put a certain percentage away for green space. So let's say we have a unit that's going to be put in seventy-five or eighty units and now they decide to put a hundred units in there. They still have to put five percent away or for for uh green space?
Uh, yes, they'll have to either compensate for that by reducing their unit sizes. But they will have to put away the percentage prescribed in zoning by law as omnia services.
Good, thank you. Oh, to you.
Um, just FYI, two hundred and twenty-five meters squared is two thousand four hundred and twenty. Almost two square feet.
Thank you.
So it's some of your houses without your. It's two hundred and twenty-five meters squared, which is the minimum parcel size for subdivision that's recommended. Is two thousand four hundred twenty-one point eight eight square feet. Yeah. I Googled it.
Purnesh.
Uh, next slide. The R three zone uh is the small parcel residential zones allowing smaller lot sizes than R one zone. So um a single detached, the minimum area for a single detached house is hundred and twelve point five square meters. In this section, uh, multi-unit apartment use is added as a principal use to allow apartment developments. And density height regulation would be same. And density height regulation would be same as the, as the urban zone. Uh, the development regulations, the proposed development regulation for the R four zone are same as the R one zone. Except with the additional provisions for modular home park. The intent is to develop a model of modular home park with freehold, uh, only sold modular home lots. Uh, now we're gonna discuss the O C P consistent amendments. So in O C P consent amendments, we are adding a new definition of zero emission charging, charging in the, in the zoning by law. And allowing zero emission charging stations in all zones. That, that is recommended in the O C P. So that's why we are introducing this new definition and then, and the uses. Then some, some guide, uh, crime prevention through environmental design guidelines, we are adding, we are adding that in, in the current zoning by law. The door density for R seven and R eight zone have been increased. And that is a, and then there is a city owned property on Kulchana, we will, we will discuss that, we will discuss those in the following slides. Uh, so. R seven and R eight zone, uh, the density for R seven and eight zone is increased from hundred and is increased to hundred and fifty units and hundred and two hundred and twenty five units per hectare. To reflect the comparable increase in density in low density zones. These changes are consist, consistent with the density in the O C P for the townhomes and apartment developments. The current density, allowed density in R seven is ninety and. And current allowed density is one twenty to one fifty. So because our O C P recommends to have. Hundred and fifty units density on in R seven, that's why we are, we are, we are making those amendments in R seven and R eight. And then city center area and. Grandview urban village area near Nofers, the intent is to have multiple story buildings. In the city center and six parcels that are located near to Nofers zone as C three. This will support O C P's vision to incorporate mid rise residential and commercial buildings in the city center and urban village. Minimum height of two story is proposed for the parcels having R eight zones all over the city of merit, all of the, all over merit. And minimum height of two stories is proposed for six properties in C three zones. Those properties are at the Forks Del Avenue. And minimum story, minimum three story in the C six city center area and the intent is to develop multi story buildings in the city center area. Counselor.
Um, this is interesting that you have this about the C three and the C six because we do have. Sections of the downtown that are C six and C three. I think it's all C six now, which is, I think. City center. So for some of the homes that are on Granite Avenue that are actually in the C six, if they have a fire and they have to rebuild. What could they rebuild? Could they have to do the three story and have multi housing or? Because I, I, I just didn't see anywhere in the slide where we addressed that because there are a number of houses that fall into that C six zoning downtown.
Uh, so we do have a provision in the O C P itself. If there's any damage by fire or any other calamity. Then the building office officer can determine how much is the damage and the resident can rebuild. To what is existing, if it is same as what was before the damage. If someone wants to redevelop completely, then they have to follow, follow the guidelines now set in the zoning by law and the O C P. So only if they have any fire or flood and if they want to rebuild, then the O C P already has the provision to rebuild as is.
I guess what my question was is, um, on granite, there's the, one of the ask wellness managed buildings. I think it's. What they even call it as not trade wins anymore, but it's in the twenty one hundred block and I think that's C six zone. And so you have some single detached houses there. So if that's C six, would, would you offer or allow multi dwelling? Could they still build residential as long as it was multi family? Or would it have to have some commercial component?
So C six already allows multifamily as a principal use.
Okay.
And, and has to be multifamily or commercial, referred as a mixed use development. But we do recognize that a lot of the properties in C six are residential currently. So they can build a multifamily residential as the principal use.
Just if it was single now. And they wanted to rebuild, they just couldn't build single family, it would have to be multi family, maybe even only just two family, not necessarily. Multi like three or.
Three or more.
Or could they, so they couldn't just build two units?
Three, uh, three is the minimum.
Is the minimum. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I was just going to say that most of the rebuilding would be really pertaining to whatever kind of insurance they already have because. They're not going to go out and say, okay, well, if this burns down, I might as well read or get more insurance so I can build a three story or multiple units. That's just not going to happen, especially with everybody's income these days.
See you.
So just to clarify. The minimum stories is three, but it doesn't have to be three separate units, correct? It could be a two story. Single and a second and another story with a unit. So I think when Counselor Echard asked, it doesn't, it doesn't have to have a separate unit on each story. It just has to be a minimum three story.
That actually was not my question. What I was wondering is, is if you had a fire with a single family C six zone home. What could you build there? Does it have to be three stories or could it just be a triplex? And does it have to be three stories or could it just be a single level with three units?
Uh, we, we'll have to check and discuss that because that is, that is a situation which we have not considered. But in case of fire, they can definitely rebuild to a single family. And this minimum height requirement is O C P consistent. So the council may choose to not adopt this.
Or could they just apply for a variant? Well, anyway, that's too many what ifs, but.
But I mean, i- if it's a single unit dwelling and it burns down and they decide to put a single dwelling unit back in, they're still allowed to do that. They don't have to go to this apartment situation. No, you don't have to.
If it matches roughly what was there before.
Yeah, you don't have to.
If they're going to completely redevelop logic here says they have to redevelop.
Take next slide. So there are city owned land on Kulchana Ave. The previous rezoning. Went to previous council and then the reasoning did not move forward due to conversations along the three D built homes. The intent for rezoning to R three is not to have a three D, three D homes, rather sell out the land or develop housing alongside the new. New housing when we, when we hire a new housing director. And the proposed multi, multi use path was designed to be along the frontage and would. There is a proposed multi use path that was designed along with the frontage, it will, it will be advan, advan, advantages for the development. So. I think when, when, um, I'm not completely sure about history, but as I, as per my knowledge, the, there was a. Previous rezoning which went to the previous council and it not, did not move forward. Due to the conversation of having three D built homes. Now we are proposing to, uh, rezone that parcel or propose R three zones to that parcel, which will be, be consistent with the O C P land use designation. Low to medium density residential. And we have added some special regulations regarding the front setbacks and rear setbacks, they can be reduced to three meters if no vehicles access to the parcel. So again, this is, uh, this is a recommendation, council may choose to, uh, refuse the recommendation if they, if they want.
Pastor Petrosi. Uh, what were the results of the soil testing there, the tracks and the creosote? They actually tested that years back, I guess. So everything checked out?
I am not sure. We can, we have to check that, yeah.
So I sat on council in twenty fourteen when we started moving forward with this. And it, it checked out. The one thing that they were concerned about was a thing called raid, which was a weed killer because sometimes it has shop life for about ten years. Yeah. And everything came back fairly, fairly okay. Yeah. There was just some, you know, some creosote scrappings that had been left behind, but they, they would not have allowed us to take it over unless it was completely. Counsel attorney.
I'm confused.
Sure.
Where is this?
That's, uh, the transportation path.
So it's between the active transportation paths and the houses where that is fenced off right now?
Okay, so this.
Tennis court, tennis court right there.
Yeah, okay. Okay, but get that, I get that. But where is from here to here? I thought this was supposed to be all the active transportation plant and we were going to. Garden on the other side of, side of the plant where it's behind the fence.
On that part.
I can speak a little bit more to that if you like, Mr. Mayor. So ultimately, I think what was originally planned because it was designated as R three in the O C P was small. Residential houses for that part. So the yellow on the map, the green on the map is parkland. So that will be community gardens. The red is the active transportation path. So what you could get in those parcels, depending on the size, the width of the parcel, but from the, from the path to, to the lot lines. Uh, back lot lines, I believe we said five hundred square meter houses, square foot, thank you, not square meter. Five hundred square foot house, um, and it could be two, obviously it could be more than one story. But ideally what you would be looking for that in that, that area would be. You know, small homes that perhaps seniors might like to move into if they're no longer able to reside in their large family homes. Which would open up family homes for younger families. Which when we don't have enough seniors housing is a problem. It would be a row of tiny homes. And essentially for those kinds, like somebody who wants to probably downsize so that we can open up some of the bigger houses in the community.
I was just putting the light on to remind Council Charney of the public meeting that she had when she had her group together. With torches and pitchforks at the previous council. Uh, well, if you're sitting on this side. We didn't do the three D housing because we were worried about leaving in the parking lot, but anyway. Uh, it, it, it was pretty aggressive, but we council decided against it. Under duress. No, I'm just kidding.
So when we first started looking at this, when I was on council, this was strictly going to be active transportation, a community garden at one end. And that's what it was going to be. We always decided it was too small for housing, but maybe not anymore. So.
What about parking? Five hundred square foot home, um.
Between the pathways.
It just seems like there is. I drive past that every single day and I just can't see it. I can't see it.
It is, it is very small and I think one of the things to think about is. Most developers are not going to develop small homes like that, right? Because there isn't enough of a profit. So if the city wants to develop those types of homes that might be more financially accessible for people on a fixed income. Um, for the long term. We don't have a lot of land. So our, our ability to, to create residential lies in that strip of land. Um, the place where the E S S building used to be the E S S trailer, we could probably do some multi. Um, unit there and the save on the. Old theater lot. Those are the only three residential type property areas that the city owns. So. We can do a lot more encouragement for developers in those areas by stating what kind of. Things we want to see there versus privately owned. Um, development areas. Right. So that's why that's coming forward. I mean, I'll, we're not, we're indifferent.
You'd be living in a garden shed here.
Yeah, five hundred square foot, but I mean, I, I, I live in a nine hundred square, I live in a, I live in a mobile home. That's smaller than five hundred square feet. No, I know, but this is back to the on street parking thing, right? Like this is the encouragement of on street parking.
It's just an update, it's covered.
Oh, don't worry.
Speaker, Council Petrosi, speaker. Council Baxter.
Is there any way we can attract tiny homes? I know other communities are not making spaces for tiny homes that are already built. Is there not? A way we can attract those people to come here and work and live here? Like they've built their tiny homes. I know a few people that have built tiny home. And they love it and they live in it.
The only problem is, I think what we're looking for is permanent structure, not something on wheels that moves around. Yeah, but that, that's not, that's, that's a government, that, that's for homeless people. That's a tiny homeless camp. That's not.
Still an example of what can be done.
Yeah, it's called a pallet house. We saw them at, uh. F C M last year. We, we had a tour of the pallet houses. But the only problem is they have no washroom facilities. They have nowhere to wash clothes. So you have to put in a centralization and everybody then gravitates towards that. Is it something completely different? I mean, I understand what you're talking about, but it's completely different.
Okay, whatever. Yeah.
So just to address some of the concerns here, the maximum height over here is three stories. So the ground story can also be used to accommodate. The parking which may not be available on the street. So if the ground story is used for parking. Then the rest two stories can be used for living. Spaces.
The only thing I'd be concerned about it be so skinny and tall every time we've got a big wind, a house will blow over right onto the road.
So this is, this is an infill. This is what we call, this is, the technical term is infill, right? And if you think about in the city where they have. Those really skinny lots that nobody's developed and they're putting those relatively narrow deep houses. They're going high, um, instead of going wide. So if you think about a single person who does not necessarily enjoy living in an apartment building. This might be an alternative where they actually would be able to have a decent sized home of a thousand square feet. Which would be a very large apartment, um, you know, up to two bedrooms quite easily. So this is, I think, what Counselor Baxter is talking about. If we were, wanted to attract that, we would have to provide. We would have to give them land, but give them land, but there'd have to be land designated for that because the privately owned land right now. There is nobody talking about this, right? People who own our, our developable lands within the city. Nobody's talking about this. This is, and this would be the only place that would be easy for us to say. Small houses, tiny homes with all the amenities. So not like a, an encampment. But actual houses with all of the amenities and as Krishna said, potentially a, a ground level parking with residential parts above. It's the same thing as your driveway going over a sidewalk. Right? It's the same premise. A sidewalk is an active transportation path. Just like an active transportation path is an active transportation path. Some of our active transportation path has multiple business entrances on it. Right? So there are lots of places where our active transportation path is, is interrupted by. Driveways to businesses and driveways to residences.
I'm sensing a field trip here.
Oh, God.
I interject something there.
Yes, please.
So something to think about, knowing that our path with this particular amendment to the zoning by law. These particular sections are about the O C P consistent. Things for our existing O C P. Over the next year or so, we're going to be redoing the O C P and the zoning by law. If this is something that. You know, if we leave it like it is for now as suggested and nothing comes up that's. Fitting for that, we can always adjust the next O C P if we have to change park space or whatever council likes at that time. But right now the O C P, we're, we're trying to change the zoning by law to meet what the O C P was agreed on before. If nothing develops out of that, over the period of time, we can always make the change later. So. So it's not critical right now to dwell on it too much.
Councillor Baxter.
Is there any way we could see if any of these residents along this way want to buy more land? Like the chunk right behind them?
That's already been, that's, that's already been done and they declined.
For their, basically their use without having any, any re- return to this, to the, to us. So that's why we have it fenced off. One of the reasons why we have fenced off is so that we don't end up with people parking there, right? So that's, I mean, I think, you know, the, the, the park space is, is really essential because we are, have been talking and had lots of interest in community garden food security work, um, which I think is a very important thing anywhere in this country, uh where the cost of food is going up and people don't necessarily have yards. Uh, so having that green space designated as park um officially in the zoning bylaw is, is, I think, is an essential part. And I think um sort of the opposite of what the director said is, you can leave it because it's in the O C P, but this zoning bylaw didn't match the O C P anyways. And in twenty twenty-five, we have to do both. And every five years going forward, we have to do both because what was happening in many places, including here is the O C P was getting done and the zoning bylaw wasn't getting done at the same time, so they didn't necessarily match. And now the government is saying they have to be done in the same year so that they actually match. So we could, any of these amendments that they're recommending from the O C P, we don't have to, you don't have to adopt them at this point because again, we will be doing this. Once this is passed, we'll probably pretty much start again. Like, within a couple of weeks, we'll probably be putting out an R F P to get some support on this.
So councillor Baxter, so you know, when I was on council, when we decided what we were gonna do with that property, they, they were all offered the first right of refusal and nobody wanted it. So, well, they wanted it, but they didn't want to pay for it. Councillor Churn.
Can you please tell me the green spaces park from what street to what street? Yeah, 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 I know it's on Kulshana, but side streets. Come on, give me some reference. Well, that's Fairleigh Park.
Yeah.
But Fairleigh Park is not on Kulshana. Well, it's at the back.
Fairleigh Park's right there and then this is where the split talk going this way. See, there's that funny house.
Yeah, yeah, so, so all the whole thing is railway line.
No, you're, you're going up too far. You've gone up too far.
So where we currently have the fence, is that the green space?
No, the entrance to there, the entrance to the, where the fences, where the rocks are, that's where the green spaces start from back and back towards Fairleigh.
Where the pathway curves.
Yeah, where the pathway curves.
Yes.
That's where the green pace spaces start.
So what about from Main Street to there? Is this?
Main Street to there is active transportation. Yes, and yeah, yeah. We'll go for a walk tomorrow.
Yeah, I got some time tomorrow. Yeah, totally confused.
The only reason I'm aware, because we've already, we went through this with council when I was on council extensively. And then it went, that was it. Yeah. Pernesh, Europe.
And uh the Gode Creek Park, the land between the Gateway two eighty-six and Palomino Estates. So historically, it has been a recreational area and creek named after Antonio Gode. So we are recommending to rezone this uh green parcels to, to park, uh which is consistent with the, with the O C P designation. And rezoning to park will help to ensure Gode Creek Craters are protected from, protected in perpetu- perpetuity. I'm sorry, perpetuity. And then uh official zoning map. This is the current zoning, zoning map, uh. So currently it has uh R one, R one A and R two and R six zones. And then in the proposed zoning map, uh, that will be revised into, into R one zone. Uh, I can just get up and.
This parcel was previously uh R one K, so that goes to R one and then parcel in this area. There are two parcels between uh rotary park and central park that was zoned at the six, so then we now are one as well. Yeah, most of the residential parcels will now have R one zone.
And there are, there are special regulations have been added for C three zones. And city-owned parcels on Kulchana and Gode Creek parcels will go through rezoning, so they have like uh park B one, so park designation. And we have, the, the, the current legend will be edited, edited as well. And then next steps in timeline and next steps, um, so we are uh going for first reading on May twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, which is the next week. And the final adoption should be done before June thirty, twenty twenty-four. And then consolidation of, of the zoning bylaw will happen after, after the adoption. And with this, I would like to conclude our presentation and we are happy to address more questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, both of you. I think we've pretty much answered, asked all the questions we had. Um, I don't think, is there anything outstanding? That's what it is. See you.
I just wanna uh thank this department. They put in a lot of extra time. We did this with um some support from an external consultant, but ultimately Pernesh and Creisha did the vast majority of the work, um which I think is a good learning opportunity because planners don't always get to affect bylaw. Um, but they will, and the same thing will happen again with our O C P and the, again, updated zoning bylaw. What we'll do for the zoning bylaw in the next go-round is we will repeal the current one and the amendments and we'll start again as a, a brand-new zoning bylaw so that we're not, we don't have like twenty different bylaws amending the same bylaw. Um, it will just make it cleaner and easier for them to manage in the department. But um I really appreciate the work and uh, and the consideration of matching some of those O C P. They didn't, we didn't have to do that for this one, but I, I thought it was a good exercise for them that they were able to get that done in the timelines that they had.
Thank you. Thank you for your work. Take the rest of the day off with pay. Excellent, thank you. I tell you, do what I can. Thank you very much for that. Thank you for all the hard work and the presentation. Sure appreciate it. And I, I'd suggest council hold on to that package. Don't turf, turf that one. Uh, closed session. Recommendation that this meeting be closed to the public pursuant section ninety-one F law enforcement. If the council considers this, that disclosure could reasonably be expected to harm the conduct of investigation under enforcement of an enactment of the community charter. Need a mover, please. Going to closed. Councillor Ogden, Councillor Baxter. All those in favor? Closed in five minutes. Thank you.